Morning, Chairman.
Good morning, Steve, and good morning to everyone here to this first online meeting of the Highways and Scrutiny Committee. My name is Bob Adams and I'm chairman of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee. This is a formal public meeting and the audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast via the county council's website. I also welcome members of the public who are listening to this online. Before we begin, I would like to confirm who is present and any membership changes. Steve Blank, the Democratic Officers Services Officer, will ask members to indicate their presence after their name is called and just say the word present. Steve?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, members. Could I please ask you to confirm your presence when your name is called in alphabetical order? councillor Adams?
Present.
Tom Ashton?
Present.
Wendy Balgett?
Present.
Chris Brewis?
Present.
Jackie Brockway?
Present.
Roddy Grocock?
Present.
Julie Killie? Julie Killie?
Present.
Thank you, Julie. Stephen Rowe?
Present.
Adam Stokes?
Present.
Eddie Strangle?
Present.
Executive councillor or support councillor? Councillor Cleo Periton-Williams?
Present.
And I don't think councillor, executive councillor Davies is present, Chairman. In terms of offices, present, Karen Casser? Carl Gibson?
Present.
Paul Rusted and Daniel Steele. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody who is present whose name has not been called out, please? Thank you. Just dealing with the housekeeping matters, if I may, very quickly. If during the meeting a member would like to ask a question or raise a point, they're requested to use the chat box function and to just write speak as a comment. When invited to speak, the vice chairman will call members in and Steve will unmute their microphones and the vice chairman will call them in to speak. Please remember when you're speaking to turn on your video. When members have finished speaking, they should mute their microphone and switch off the video. Members are requested to indicate using again the chat box function if they are temporarily or permanently leaving the meeting. If members lose connection during the meeting, it is recommended that they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided. If a member does not, sorry, if a member does lose connection, I will pause the meeting for a period to allow that member to rejoin the meeting. If the member has not rejoined the meeting by the time the chairman recommences the meeting, the member will be treated as having left the meeting during the period of their absence. If we go on to the main item on the agenda, Steve, apologies and replacement members, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. An apology from councillor Robin Renshaw. And I have been informed by the chief executive that councillor Julie Killie has replaced councillor Renshaw for this meeting only. And an apology from councillor Mike Brooks, who is involved on civic duties in his capacity as chairman of the council, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I think we probably should record Richard, councillor Richard Davies' apologies as well, please, Steve.
Well done, Chairman.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, the members are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of the cunary interest forms. Any member have any additional interest to declare applicable to this meet?
Nobody showing, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Can we then go on to the minutes of the last meeting which have been circulated? I don't prefer to go through them in detail. Does any member have any query on the minutes in terms of fact? Okay, then we'll go on to take a vote on the, on the minutes.
Chairman, councillor Brewis has put his hand up.
I beg your pardon, could, could you?
I was merely going to propose then, Chairman, as a correct record.
That's very kind of you, Steve. Do I have, Chris, do I have a second, please?
Yeah, happy to second that, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Steve Black, do we go through a formal vote or is it just a record of anybody who might be not satisfied with the?
Thank you, Chairman. We will take a formal vote on the minutes. And it will be a question of members either indicating for, against or abstain. Right, councillor Bob Adams?
For.
Councillor Tom Ashton?
For.
Councillor Wendy Balgett?
For.
Councillor Chris Brewis?
For.
Jackie Brockway, councillor?
For.
Councillor Rodney Grocock?
For.
Councillor Julie Killie? I think probably Julie, you're abstaining on this because you weren't present at the last meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Stephen Rowe?
For.
Councillor Adam Stokes?
For.
And councillor Eddie Strangle?
Abstained due to being at the border to coast pension committee in Leeds.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. We're now going on to item four on the agenda, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and officers. I have no announcement to make. Cleo, anything for yourself or on behalf of Richard?
No, we have no announcements at all.
Thank you, Cleo. Any officers, any announcements to make, please? I'll take that as a no and move on to item five on the agenda, which is in the hands of Paul Gibson, please. Carl, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm hoping this presentation is going to show up in a minute. Can everybody see that?
Yes, yes.
And so I've just got a short presentation this morning on the report before you for the improvement of the A631 Corrigan Road Thorn dyke Way junction in Gainsborough, where we're going to change the current configuration to a traffic signal control junction. So just to give an indication of whereabouts, the location is in Gainsborough. So the junction is located to the north east of Gainsborough where the big red circle is. And the A631 Thorn dyke way is a 60 mile an hour dual carriageway road which runs south west into Gainsborough and across the river Trent and north east through to the A15 and onwards towards Louth. Corrigan Road, which is this road heading to the east west direction, is a single lane carriageway and that runs into Gainsborough town centre. There's also a fourth leg at the junction which is a farm access to Whiteswood Farm to the southeast of the junction. So this slide is just showing what the current configuration of the junction is today. So as you can see, there's a series of give way movements at this junction at the moment. And the junction has got a significant highway safety problem and it's had it for many years. And although there's been a number of minor modifications to try and address the issue, unfortunately, the accidents are still high. In the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership Accident Assessment, which is an assessment they do at junctions to see which is the worst in Lincolnshire, this is actually ranked number one now for accidents over the last five years for serious and fatal injuries. So the proposed scheme is to install four way traffic signals to improve the safety of the junction and reduce the number of collisions by removing the uncertainty that drivers could feel with the current give way configuration. It will also improve safety and accessibility to the Corrigan Road industrial estate, which is along Corrigan Road, and accommodate future development growth aspirations in the area which is also planned off Corrigan Road. The proposal will also enhance the highway network resilience by reducing the number of collisions. It is consistent with other traffic signal control junctions on the A631 Thorn dyke way, which serves the Heaping Road industrial estate and Heaping Road itself, which are located to the south west heading towards Gainsborough. The estimated scheme cost is 1.6 million and it will be funded through contributions from the Greater Lincolnshire Local Enterprise Partnership, West Lindsay District Council through a developer section 106 and Lincolnshire County Council. We've also got a memorandum of understanding with West Lindsay District Council to ensure that they provide their contribution before the end of March 2021. But as things stand today, we're likely to get that money a lot sooner. The works programme to start in early September and it's estimated to be completed in December 2020. So therefore I hope you'll agree with the recommendation to progress the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Do members have any questions for Carl, please?
Councillor Periton-Williams?
Cleo?
I don't have any questions for Carl. I was just, wanted to say that this is in my division. This is one of the junctions that if you speak to anyone in my division, they will know about this junction. And I am so pleased that this scheme has been brought forward to help improve the junction safety and it's fantastic. I'm very pleased about it.
Thank you, Cleo. Any further questions to Carl?
None, nobody asking.
Nobody? Are we, what are we being asked to do specifically? Sorry, let me go back to the agenda paper. So we're being asked that the executive councillor for highways approves the scheme appraisal and that the leader of the council approves in principle the award of an entering into a contract for the construction of the scheme. Steve, can we do with, yeah, I think we need to probably separate vote on both of those items, Steve, do we?
Yes, please, Chairman.
In that case, I'll leave it with you to go through the voting procedure, Steve. Thank you.
Okay. If members could indicate for, against, abstain, I'll read out their names. Thank you. Councillor Adams?
For.
Councillor Ashton?
For.
Councillor Balgett?
For.
Councillor Brewis?
For.
Councillor Brockway?
For.
Councillor Grocock? Councillor Grocock?
For.
Councillor Killie? Councillor Killie?
Can you unmute yourself, Julie, please?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
For.
Councillor Stokes?
For.
Councillor Strangle?
For.
That's unanimous, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I think that was vote for both the recommendations, Steve, yes?
Yes, it is, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item six, which is in the hands of Paul Rusted. Sorry, Paul, we haven't said good morning to you yet, but a very good morning to you.
Morning, Chairman.
This item is in your hands, item six on the agenda, performance report, please, Paul.
Okay, morning, everyone. This is the quarter four performance report. So it covers a number of areas. It's got the major highway schemes update. The last quarter of the old Lincolnshire Highways Alliance performance. There's a complaints report for quarter four, a compliments report, which is an annual review. And there's also an update on Fix My Street. So if you remember, that's an aerial work that we've been asked to do so that we can get some slightly better responses back to members of the public. Cover the major highway schemes update first then. You should have as appendix eight, you report a reasonably comprehensive update on the various schemes that we've got. I'll take you through some of the highlights. Lincolnian bypass is starting to look like a proper road scheme now. I think we've improved spring and summer weather. We've managed to just about complete all the major earthworks. We've employed a new drainage subcontractor now is progressing the drainage works a lot quicker than perhaps the previous one was. And we're doing things like curbing and the actual surfacing is beginning to start now as well. Topsoiling the embankments. It's, it's all starting to look like a proper scheme and we're expecting that to be finished sometime in the late autumn this year. So good progress on Lincolnian bypass. Good progress on Grantham Southern Relief Road as well. There's a list there of the various activities that have been taking place. One that haven't gone on there was some of the bridge beam lifts that have happened over a couple of weekends. So these are the bridge beams that are required for the underpass. They've all been lifted into place now. And as I say, the underpass is now starting to take shape. So once again, good progress on Grantham Southern Relief Road. Moving then probably to Spalding Western Relief Road. We've had some good news. When I wrote this report, we were just at the time trying to get some further funding out of the HCA. That's Homes England, that's actually happened now. And it was, it was really good result for the scheme. We've got a further 8.1 million pounds as a contribution to the cost of that scheme. So that's really very welcome news. The next scheme then is the F46 Welton Roundabout. That has now started. And that's Eurovia started to build that. So those of you that use that road will see that the compound has been built and some of those initial earthworks are starting to take place. Rise Home Road Roundabout, that continues. Brahini came back after furloughing the staff and they're now picking up the pace. There is a slight delay due to the interruption of coronavirus, but progress is now good. And those of you that live and drive through Sleaford will see that the Rugby Club Junction started as well. And that's another scheme that's been progressed by Eurovia and progress looks to be fairly good. Holding Roundabout, I think I reported at the last meeting, we have delayed the start of that till February next year just to avoid some of the worst of the winter weather. Corrigan Road Junction, you just had the report on something, you know, the background to that. And the final one, I just wanted to pick up was the Roman Bank Sketness. So that's a scheme that we've wanted to carry out quite some of the time. Those of you that you know Roman Bank will know that it's, it's in quite a state. We were successful at getting a five million pound grant from the government to progress that. And the tenders for that scheme should be back this week. So we'll understand where we are in respect to getting that work carried out. I think that just takes you through the major schemes, Chairman. Is it worth taking some, any questions now or do you want to take them right at the end?
Thank you, Paul. Are there any, any members wishing to ask?
No, nobody's specified they want to speak. Still no one.
Who, no?
Okay, I'll, I'll move on then, Chairman. So the next part of the report just covers the Biggish Highways Alliance performance. So this was the final quarter of the alliance that we had with Kia, WSP and Denic. Some slight drop off in performance and that was pretty much down to all the demobilisation for the three contracts that was happening. I think the only one that's remained at the same level as the previous quarter was WSP as and obviously that was helped by the fact we weren't changing supplier for that particular contract. So shall I go through the detail? The performance was still good, really considering that I said that each of those contracts has been demobilised. So there were no real concerns in there. And as I said, the performance really considering was reasonably pretty good. I'll just pick up some of the particular issues that have gone on each contract then, some of the works that have been done. So usually talk about our favourite subject, potholes in the highway works and contracts. You'll see from the narrative that I've got some data there for quarter one so far in 2021. And we've seen quite a drop off in the number of pothole reports and repairs. Now, it's probably because of coronavirus. We've seen far fewer, at that time, we saw far fewer reports from members of the public. So we were only picking up potholes that were seen by our inspectors while they're out doing their inspections. The reports from members of the public are now picking back up again as I think everyone gets back to work. So I think those numbers start to increase. Just as a sort of sum up for all the works that we did in the entirety of the financial year, 5.8 million pounds worth of patching, 4.9 million pounds worth of carriageway resurfacing and about 2.6 million pounds of carriageway reconstruction works. So in total, that helped us to deliver a surface dressing programme that covered over 700 individual sites. That was around 250 miles of our network that we treated. We reconstructed about nine miles of footwear with a further 155 miles being slurry sealed, which provides a new surface. We also cleansed about 180,000 gullies, 25,000 miles of grass were cut. And we did an excess of 200 miles of white lines that were refreshed as well. So a major amount of work that was carried out in the, in the total of the year. Just moving on then, I put a, I put a slight update on where we are with community maintenance gangs. So this is an additional 4.9 million pounds of funding that we've got. And these were gangs, these are gangs that are doing the sort of minor aesthetic works, tidying up poor areas. Some slightly larger civils work that wouldn't normally get picked up by our asset management strategy. More drainage investigation, which focuses on some of the issues that came out of 2019 floods and a series of additional minor handling, patching and pothole repairs. So far, we've done about 1,200 individual jobs and these have been carried out by the various gangs in close liaison with each of the councillors. So you will be getting a report that's provided for your electoral wards throughout the year, the amount of work that's been done by the community maintenance gangs. We've also set up a specific internal email address now. So that's for the, for the slightly more complex issues that you can actually get more detail on. Initially, that was set up with just your county council email address, but we've now taken some of your private email addresses as well. And that's really trying to give you further concise information that you can feed back to members of the public. So much since we've launched, we've managed to give you a 93% response time within the county report, within 10 days. We're trying to reach that obviously to make sure that we get as near to 100% as possible. So I'm hoping that you're finding that a useful addition to some of the services that we've provided previously. There are updates on the professional services contract and the traffic signals term contract as well in there, which I wasn't proposing to go through the actual narrative, Chairman. Moving on next to the highways and transport complaints and compliments. We've got compliments first. So some interesting data there. Some of the numbers are fairly small, but I think there's been an interesting trend. So we saw a decrease from the last quarter by 31%, but there's been a 118% increase when compared to quarter four of 2018, 19. So a drop off from the previous quarter, but a substantial increase from the comparative quarter the year before. So I think that's, that's a good trend actually. There was 86 compliments compared to the 61 from the previous year. A large range of reasons for the various compliments. Most of those are around the usual things, road impairment, repairs. They accounted for about 48% of compliments, but as I say, a positive trend upwards for compliments. Complaints, I pick up next. That's increased from the last quarter by around 15%. But there's been a 49% reduction when compared to the previous quarter.
Could you go back a little bit, please, Steve? Because we lost you for part of that, if you can.
Oh, did you? Which bit did you miss? Sorry, it's from the communications down in Gedney.
Not quite sure when we lost you, Steve, to be honest, and Paul, to be honest. I don't know whether Steve can help, can he?
I think a lot of us didn't lose him, Bob. I think it might have been your end. I heard him, definitely.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Steve. Move on, Paul, sorry.
No, that's okay, Chairman. I'll, I'll, I'll start complaints again there. So there's an increase of 15% from the last quarter. A positive 49% reduction in complaints when compared to the comparative quarter the year before. So that's a substantial decrease. The other positive statistic is that there are no complaints that are now being escalated through into the further process. So once again, I think we've started to deal a lot better with complaints compared to how we've done previously. And that should be feeding through into a much more positive year of our service. The two reports are, can be found as appendix C and D, just if you want the extra detail. I'm just going to move on now to Fix My Street. So these are, this is one of the areas that's given us quite, quite some concern in the past, I think. And just some of the status, some of the status responses that have gone back in the past have perhaps not been the sort of thing that we wanted for members of the public. So you recall back in October, you had a report about the system and there was a number of improvements that we proposed to carry out. This is an update really on some of those improvements. So the first, first, I suppose, graph to note is the, how faults were reported. Those of you that got it in colour, and I accept that it might be slightly difficult if it's in black and white. It just shows the levelling off really between the, where we receive reports from members of public. So that's gone from being quite specifically unbalanced to quite a balanced view now, of those that come through Fix My Street and those that come through the customer contact centre. So previously, we used to get a lot more through the contact centre than Fix My Street. So I think that's a trend that we want to progress. We want people to be able to correspond and deal with this through Fix My Street. The second graph just shows you the type of faults that we get. So probably no great surprises. The peaks are usually in the winter where we get far more potholes. As some of the, you know, the winter takes its toll on the carriageway. So you'll see that there's obvious peaks really taking place between sort of November to January, February each year. There's also a slight drop off, or at least quite a drop off at the, in the March figures just through the impact of coronavirus. Moving on to some of the detailed recommendations then. So the first one we've got in there, which was recommendation two in the previous report, was about the updates made to faults by members of the public. So those are now going straight through to highway staff, which is the work previously. That just allows that better interaction between members of the public. All those updates that are made by members of the public now get to highway staff in 24 hours. So that should help them to deal more effectively with those comments and complaints. The second recommendation was around training. So Karen, when she arrived, wanted to put customer engagement and this positive liaison with members of the public as one of our high priorities. And she rolled out a series of events for our staff. That was carried out, I'd say, in November of 2019. So we've now got a clear customer strategy and all the teams are clear about they, that they should give decent response in customer engagement as a priority now. The third recommendation, or the recommendation one and three, so the third item on there is improved responses. So we've updated our generic Fix My Street responses. So these are trying to give much better information to members of the public about what's actually happening. We've moved to trying to tell customers when they report a fault that they would receive an update within 14 days. We've also improved the quality of some of the responses to help customers understand why actions hadn't happened immediately. And you can see some of that as an appendix E, I think that's page 73 of your report. We've also, we've, we've seen reports that have received a detailed update and there's some numbers in there. So back in September and August, between September 2018 and August 2019, about 88% of reports received a detailed response. We've now moved that up to about 94%. So we're gradually increasing the number of detailed responses that members of the public get. Next recommendation was about personalised updates. We started updating Fix My Street with those personalised responses from February 2020. So these are really the ones that are particularly around the things that potentially aren't a highway authority responsibility. So maybe a district council responsibility or one of the utilities. So we now start to try and give a more relevant response to members of the public, telling them what action's being taken. So that should be a big improvement. Over the page then, some of the next steps that we're going to try and take. So there's a few more other recommendations that we're trying to still do some work on. So the first one is the customer journey review. That's an end to end process review. So the first one is customer journey review, and that's an end-to-end process review of all the highway fault reporting that's been undertaken. This is ongoing work. We now start to work with Balfour BT through the new contract to make sure that we've maximised some of the benefits that we get out of Balfour's approach to the use of Confirm and Fix My Street. So that work's ongoing, you should start to see some improvements from that soon. Continuous monitoring, we're doing more detailed reporting now to try and respond quicker to fault issues, and that's trying to establish why we may be slow to respond to customers and trying to improve some of those areas. We're also expanding Fix My Street into some other service areas, so expanding that into things like bus stops and right-of-way queries, so we're just trying to make sure that there's a more consistent approach across those as well. So in conclusion, that covers the performance report. Just reflection really on the fact that Lincolnshire Alliance was successful for 10 years. I think it did deliver a good quality of service over those 10 years, but obviously now we're trying to move that sort of level of performance into a new state with our new partners. But in overall terms, I think the performance report is quite positive. A number of areas of improvement that we're trying to take forward, hopefully that will reflect in your interaction with members of the public. So conclusive report, Chairman.
Thank you, Paul, for a very comprehensive report. And as you say, it's a great deal of positives there going forward. Chairman, any speakers?
I've got councillor Brockway has shown that she'd like to speak. There's a couple of people putting their hands up, but they're not requesting to speak. But councillor Brockway's first.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. And thank you very much for the report, Paul. Something I noticed particularly is it's not just that the standards are up, but they're consistently up. There's a stability in the high standards, which I think is a really, really good achievement. So thank you for that. I just need a clarification, please. I noticed in the client performance summary, it's page 45 of the overall pack, but it's got five of 24 in little numbers as well. So just above the green table on the bottom right-hand side, it says in the overall summary that the client has decreased this quarter. Okay, then it explains it. This is due to an increase in the value of compensation events versus targets. Does that mean monetary value, or is it that the compensation events are more serious, though increasing the monetary value of those? Is it just the money or the type of event?
As much as you say it's a bit of a combination, so compensation events are where change happens on works orders, so perhaps we haven't scoped it out sufficiently, or when we get on site, there are things that, there are further works that require to be done. We try and avoid as many compensation acts as possible because it influences and impacts on the programme, and also means that those works cost more. So it's usually sort of a combination of reasons.
Okay, thank you. Could I just one more clarification, Chairman, if I may? So it's not a case of decreasing standards there, just that there almost more needs to be put in?
Standards, perhaps the roads deteriorated. So I think because of the long-term programming that we do now, we're marking some of these areas out sort of five to six months in advance, and there can be further, I mean, we're trying anticipate any further deterioration, but occasionally there are extra pieces of work that needs to be done when we get there.
I understand. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Next to speak is, sorry, next to speak is councillor Bruis.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think it's a very positive report from Paul, which I very much appreciate. And certainly in this part of the world, in the far South East, I should look forward to the next report, quarterly report we get, because I've been quite impressed how things have carried on in what has been a very difficult period, and things have happened, and if things are reported, they seem to get done. So I want to thank Paul not only for the report, but for how it's still continuing during the current crisis, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, and I think we'd all echo those comments as well, Chris. Any further speakers, please?
I think councillor Grocock would like to, but he's not using chat, but I'm sure that's what he wants.
You need to unmute your microphone, please, Rodney.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I apologise to you, Steve, I don't really use chat, but I just know how to wave my hand. Anyway, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Paul. There's a couple of things I want to say. The first thing is that in respect of, we talked about recently, about getting on to the utility companies and get them to do their work properly. Is this in any of your figures, Paul? If not, can you tell me if there's anything been done about that, or are we in the process? And the second thing is, after speaking and having complaints from district councillors and parish councillors, I've been using the county or the councillor email address direct to highways, and I am absolutely fantastically overwhelmed with that. The response I've had has been magnificent. It's been within 24 hours, and when I've reported it back to district and parish council, they think that it's brilliant. So well done for that. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll do. Sorry, Paul, do you wish to come back and comment? Yes?
Yeah, well, I will do, Chairman. I'll just pick up on the utilities. Performance of the utilities now, control of them isn't actually in this report, councillor Grocock, but that comes as a separate report about permitting and some of the other street works activities that we do. But we are having a considerable focus on utilities at the moment. We're doing an increased coring programme, so that's where we go and corder works after they've done it, to make sure that it's done to the performance specification. And off the back of that, then we can serve improvement plans on the various utilities to make sure that they improve some of the quality of the works that they're doing. So you're right that it is an issue, and we are focused on it, and we are starting to do a lot more work on that. Perhaps just picking up on your really positive comments about the email address, what we've tried to do as well in sort of unison with some of Karen's work around engagement is that we are, as you know, we've replaced quite a number of quite key staff in the divisions. So certainly for your area, you've got a new local highway manager, so we're bringing in quite a number of people with a, hopefully, an improved approach to customer focus and responding to members. So I think you're starting to see the impact of some of that as well.
I think that's absolutely right. Thank you for that, Paul. Thank you, Rodney. Any other speakers or comments, Mr. Chairman?
Nobody else asking to speak.
Thank you. Could I just make a comment, Paul? I know we've done a lot of work on trying to get the parishes and people to understand the difference between the working, the community work gangs and the asset management team. Is there anything else that you can do to, the queries I get now, some of the time, is they've done that bit of work, but they've ignored that bit next to it. And I'm sort of asking, was that a community gang or was that a fix by, sorry, an asset management? Is there anything that we might be able to do to really clarify that, particularly through the parish councils?
I think there probably is actually, Chairman, yeah. I mean, it's confusing to quite a number of us, I think. So we've got to be fairly clear about what each gang's capable of. What we've tried to do is make sure that we understand the programmes for each type of activity and giving them some flexibility, so that we don't have different gangs going to do different types of work. So that's ongoing, to try and make sure that it doesn't look as confusing as perhaps it could be. I think the other positive that may come out is the price per fault model that we've got with Balfour BT now. So this whole situation where we used to go and repair one pothole, went another and leave one that had developed since, and we've marked it out, that shouldn't be happening anymore. We should be starting to fix all those that are in the same area, so that should start to improve perception as well.
Karen wishes, Karen wishes to speak, Bob, and I would like to afterwards, please.
Thank you. In your hand, Steve, Karen?
Okay, just to really support what Paul was saying, but also what we have done, what you will see happening on the network, is if it is a highway fault that has been picked up from a resident or from one of our safety inspections, you will see a mark next to that defect or within it. If the community gangs are doing a work in a location and you see one of these defects that has a mark in, we've had to do a clear delineation, as Paul said, between price per defect and what the main community maintenance gangs are doing. What we didn't want to have was reported works, those going on sites, et cetera, and community maintenance gangs there. Now, I know councillor Davies did send an email out, but that if you saw a gang on site, depending on which set of works they did, would indicate whether they were the defect repair gang or the community maintenance gang.
Thank you for that, Karen. Steve, you wish to come in?
Yeah, it's for Paul, really. The comment about doing works around a reported piece of work, there was some work done around North Hycam where that wasn't happening, and I challenged the highways officer who told me that that hadn't been brought in. I take it then that that has now been brought in?
You're right, councillor, honour. We need to get Balfour BT's mobilised initially, and there was some concern around their ability to carry out the works that we'd already identified. That's not the case, so we've got to agree that switch on for price per fault, which will be coming in the next week or two.
Thank you very much. And I've nobody else asking to speak.
Thank you, Steve. Excuse me, thank you, Steve. You happy with that response? Yes?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. If there are no more speakers or no more comments, et cetera, or no more questions to Paul, what's required is to consider and comment on the detail of performance contained in the report. I think we've done that, and I think we've done that reasonably well. But could I ask members, happy to receive and note the report, please? I think just say, we don't need a formal vote on this, Steve Black, do we?
We certainly don't, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. In that case, we can move on to item seven, which is the committee work programme, please, Daniel.
Thank you, Chairman. The work programme is shown on page 80 of the pack, and the next meeting of the committee is on the 14th of September. The items there are listed in the agenda. Just picking up also on some of the points that were mentioned around the permitting scheme, which Paul mentioned earlier from a question from councillor Grocock, that is currently scheduled, I think, for the January 2021 meeting, which is an annual report when we look at that. So the work programme's listed. If there's any additional items that members would like to see, then they can just mention so now. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Any comments or any queries from any member, please?
Councillor Bruis first.
Chris. Thank you, Chairman. Mine's a general comment, thank you very much, and a compliment to our staff. When we were told that Long Sutton Market had to be closed, and this is very much a general comment, I'm very grateful to my colleague, Peter Copeland, and to all the county officers who managed to get an emergency closure of our marketplace put in so the market could continue, and I want everybody to know how very well they worked on our behalf. Thank you very, very much indeed.
Thank you, Chris. I'm sure the officers will note that and pass on your thanks to the appropriate people. Thank you, Paul. Any other comments?
Councillor, yeah, councillor Ashton to speak now, please.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm delighted to see that on the 26th of October, we have rail in Lincolnshire and engagement with Network Rail and Train Operating Company. I might have mentioned this to you before, but before all of this lockdown and everything else happened, I put together a brief paper which makes the case for taking advantage of the coming timetable change, I think in about December 2022, to route one of the current trains from Lincoln in the morning and the return in the evening via Sleaford and Sfolding to give a greater proportion of our county the advantage of direct access on a direct train to London. I shared my work at the time with councillor Bruis, who I know represents council in many of these forums. I was wondering whether there would be opportunities to circulate the work that I've done and see if there would be broad consensus for giving us a bit of a shove when the opportunity presents itself to us on the 26th of October. I know we've got a meeting in the meantime, and I wonder whether that's something we could pick up. I'm happy to share it and send it over to you.
I'm sure that can be arranged, Tom. I don't see any problem with that. Daniel, do you?
No, no, I'll pick that up and we can have a look and see what we can do.
So can we sort of include an interim report into the September meeting, do you think?
I probably wouldn't say it would be possible then that quickly, because I know when we deal with the various rail operators and stuff, that it's taken a lot of organisation to get them to all come together on that October date. But definitely, I'll speak to councillor Ashton outside the meeting, and we can get something done with the officers who are responsible for the rail side of things, definitely.
Briefly, Chairman, if I can, I like to say we've been trying to get something of this nature for a long time, and anything that brings it forward, I wholeheartedly support as your rep. Yeah, great idea.
Thank you, Chris. Tom, are you happy with the course that that will take?
Very happy. I will send it, send over what I've produced to Daniel and have a conversation outside of the meeting.
Nobody, sorry, sorry, Chairman, nobody else looking to speak now?
Okay, if there's nobody else wishing to speak, that brings us to the end of the meeting, and I thank the officers for their comprehensive.